It's ten o'clock on Tuesday, February seventh. Eric is just coming back in the room, so we will wait. I'll call the meeting to order. If you would join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, re�ity and justice for all.
Public comment. Don't see any public. additions to the agenda. Items and discussion added by commissioners. Is there anything you guys want to add today because the agenda?
I didn't, I don't have any.
Yeah, I think recovered.
Okay. I'm reading an approval of minutes. Would you guys?
I'm gonna approve. One second.
Okay, let's move next second in. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes two to oh, two to zero. I abstain as I was absent last week. Okay, Commissioner comments and committee reports. Can Commissioner read this?
I don't think I have any.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have anything this week.
Um, last week I had a senior village advisory board meeting, um, and then, um, the commission and myself, we had our road and bridge workshop on Friday. Uh, reports of elected officials and department heads. We are with Stacy Waggles, solid waste. Thanks for joining us.
Sure.
Wanted to, um, chat with you on the county white from that base. I know I'd emailed.
Uh huh.
Um, I've received great feedback from the schools, the churches, everybody's responded and let us know the details. We're on board, so, um, it's exciting to see people want to participate.
Yeah.
Um, I, I found a couple like flyers that other counties are doing, um, and we don't need to make decisions today, just kind of start the conversation of how we will logistically, like I'd like to get a flyer out soon. That way we can share it with the schools, churches, put them around the county, um, so people can save the dates, but, um, as far as the information you could compile is what you've done in the past. I know you worked with the city when they did their cleanups, um, they did the tie.
The only thing that we did with the city when they did their cleanup was the tires and we just continued that. The commissioners been about COVID time, I think we quit because it's way expensive.
Okay.
And I think we quit doing that. Um, otherwise we're open, of course, you know, regular hours.
Yeah. Okay.
So.
So bring a tire, so bring tires to you.
Well, you can bring them in Effingham.
Cause I mean.
Yes, yeah.
They have to have sides kind of.
Yes.
Right.
Yep. But yeah, they could bring a dump truck load full if they wanted to cut them up and take them to Effingham.
Percent.
Well, I mean, that's, that's what it's for, so. Um, you want these back there?
No.
Okay, okay.
I just, as an examples of if we're planning on just running regular hours on Friday, Saturday, um, if we are gonna do a collection site anywhere on Sunday, I know it's a day off for people, but like, should we have a dumpster or something available? So the churches and everyone that's participating on Sunday can put their somewhere like I, I think.
Well, we've got those orange cans from Effingham, but they're not. I guess they're open talk. But I mean, you'd have to be careful, uh, somebody go down and put a couch in there and it's getting full. I, you know, I don't know whether you want to man it or how you'd want to do that, but we got two of those that we could put somewhere and Joey could come in Monday and dump them and have our Tuesday and have them back there again by Wednesday.
If we get some rollouts and just give some rollups to Martin or somebody.
Good.
Mm hmm.
Serious effort.
I think somehow it should be manned because
Sure.
we're gonna have. I mean, you could have, hey, you can.
Oh, yeah. And you're gonna, if you're not paying attention to it, yeah, you're gonna.
And.
So maybe we can do a survey of county staff that's willing to.
Well, I already asked Jody and he said he would.
Okay.
And and really if he's there, it would be best to two o'clock or four o'clock or whatever time he said, he just leaves with it.
Yeah.
Takes it with him and goes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Which would be our cans, not, not if we had rollouts hired, but you know, he could take the first one, dump it, come get the second one and then just
Be done.
Then they're gone. You don't have people.
Yep.
Or we're in a location that could be locked and they couldn't get to it. You know.
Well, and, and my thought would be over there where the recycle cans are, where they're by express loop.
Uh huh.
There's Brian's. I mean, that's, that's where people are used to.
That's.
Going for their recycling. It's close. It's, you know, and it's easy for us to, and Brian wouldn't be there. So on the weekend, Jody could just put them in the middle of the parking lot and.
As long as they're blocked.
True. Yeah. But he could get them over to the side where because he could even move the recycle ones over a little bit. It's possible, yeah.
Awesome.
We're gonna have you come over and telling for sure that you've not.
Oh, as long as it's.
Yeah. Yeah, he knows that, so.
So maybe we can work on.
And that's Sunday. That's not Saturday.
Yeah, so it's Friday, Saturday, Sunday, um, and that's really all that we've, and the dates of April twenty first, twenty second, twenty third. Um, and then just wanting to get with you on, you know, the details as far as.
So Friday and Saturday, you would say that we're gonna be open to regular hours, eight to four.
Um, so.
Where, where are we at on Sunday?
Uh, churches. The church groups are participating.
Okay.
And the schools would be done by four, so they're, I mean, because they have all their te- teachers. I mean, I was really impressed with their responses. Everybody is excited to participate. The chamber, everybody responded, so. Um, it's really just up to us to kind of nail down some details and put together some information on a flyer and send it out to all of them.
So it's Sunday time, like twelve to four, something like that.
Well, it's probably whatever Jody's willing to. I mean, twelve to four would be
I'm just asking.
Good. I mean, that's a good suggestion.
We didn't talk about ours. I just asked him if he'd be willing to do it and he's going, well, good. You know, what do you say? But twelve to four would be good. That's after church and you know, if you're gonna do it, that, that's when you do things usually.
These flyers, not only, I mean, what information do they have on them? Because we don't want people loading up a truck on the side of the road, then driving and scattering back out, because I know I was talking with the guy this morning saying Norville had a cleanup day yesterday, or just this, within this last week. Kids were out of school, they piled leaves in the vehicle and they were driving and they were blowing all over, you know, half of them were, by the time they got them to the dump site. So I mean, I think we need to maybe.
Well, that was the thing when, um, when Mark Ziltner organized the state highway cleanup. It was nice. You show up, pick up trash for your two hours, you leave your bags and you, and you leave. Like, it's not an inconvenience. You show up and you do it. And so just thinking of if we could have sites where the bag, I mean, I, I don't know what, what the answer is.
I mean, that's what we were just talking about, you know, that two eighty six is just a disaster. And I was telling him just last week, Jody went out to pick up a, a mess out there and Jeremy Pete came along and said, don't pick it up. I found the name. I'm gonna go hunt them down and they're gonna go pick it up. So he, that's been happening, not often enough.
Yeah, no, I know Sheriff's.
But they're trying.
Yeah, and I.
But that still is, if we're gonna pick up a road anywhere.
That's.
That's the road that needs picked up, I would say.
Yeah, I, I think it's really gotten worse in the last couple of months for some reason. I don't know why, but, uh.
Uh, well, and you know, we've, over the years, we've talked about different ways to enforce tarping and that's not something I could do. That has to be done by the sheriff's office, you know, that enforcement of tarping. Or that's the way it was when we talked about it a few years ago, I think, right?
So. And so Sheriff and I had a conversation about that because we were brainstorming, trying to come up with a solution of, okay, if someone pulls up out there and isn't tarped and you take a photo of them, you know, can that suffice? But then, you know, you get into that, well, you're telling me my load's not secure. It's secure. I didn't lose anything. Like, how do you, there's, how do you prove it, right? And I don't have the answer to that. I mean, we can read the statutes, but like, in order to hold people accountable without physically finding their name and, you know, or.
But if you make it too strict, people are gonna say, well, I'm not gonna even go because I might get picked up, so I'm gonna dump it on the back.
Yeah.
Back road.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
It's, it's been an issue forever and we've tried to come up with it.
Cool. And even the tarp thing is like, what does that look like? Because I can put a tarp over the back, you know, that's not.
Or a lot of people use their trash, like if they have a big piece of cardboard or something, they kind of put that over and that, that works, you know? Sometimes it works, sometimes it don't. It just depends on how they're doing it, you know, or.
You can tell when there's attempts made to, to really make it much better and and acceptable versus no regard at all.
Well, some of them just throw it on there and drive out there and, and then when you say, well, you lost something, no. How this person was, you know, I'll get phone calls and we'll go out and tell them, you know, so and so was behind you at the airport and they saw you lose it. You need to go back and pick that. Well, unless I send a man out there with them, how do you know they did? Some of them do because some of them come back, but they dump their load, they're going back town, you know, so.
And also if we have countywide person that does nothing but pick up trash, people are gonna use, well, I don't need to secure it. They've got somebody paying taxes to do that, so they're gonna be.
Well, let me just, no, we're talking about countywide volunteer cleanup day.
I know, but I'm talking about the, oh.
Okay, in general, yeah.
Is he gonna clean up?
Yeah.
But if you're sending somebody out to pick up a highway, I'd say on that day or that weekend, I mean, the highway I'd suggest.
Yeah.
I mean, there's trash countywide.
Sure.
I, I, yes, you start paying attention. I mean, every
Oh, yeah.
Every direction, it's just keeping skidding.
Even in town sometimes.
So I know they do a citywide cleanup, um.
They quit doing that.
Well, I, they may, the college does it though still. I see this dude, they go behind my house. I've seen him in town. So I know there's different groups doing things different times. Uh, I wonder if it'd be worth contacting like four age scouts, project Atchison, Benedictine College. Students in some of their classes are required to do so much community service.
I put them all on there. Everybody's willing. They're all ready.
So, so you start to be C two?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Yep, service learning contact and, um,
Okay, good.
A couple of B C I, pretty much everyone.
Okay, you said churches and schools, so I'm making sure.
Oh, sorry. I, I was just explaining why the Friday, the Sunday and the Saturday, trying to encompass as many people from the county.
I believe you'll have a pretty good turnout.
Yeah.
And on here it talks about cost. Well, by then will be no tipping fee, so that won't. And I might put that on there, you know, no, no fee.
Yeah, bring your town.
And David will be open, not Friday, but he'll be open Saturday in Effingham. Of course, that one's a little tricky because you fill up that can and there's nobody to haul it. We'll be dumping on Saturday.
Would anybody would be willing to open up on Friday? Out there? The only reason I ask is three seventy seven had a huge response, including all the.
Oh, in Effingham?
Yeah, all the teachers and I mean, if we could open that Friday and Saturday, it'd be great.
You guys are gonna get a few days off after the Sunday.
Well, then we get to close Tuesday and Wednesday. I'll tell them you said that.
No, I don't say too soon.
You're being recorded, so it's gonna be on there.
Let's first keep that here.
Uh, which Friday I've got everybody on staff Friday, so, I mean, depending on how much was coming in, the trick would be to get the can once they get full to get them dumped and ready for Saturday, but you do that on overtime Friday evening. If, you know, it's just a once in a, one year thing, so.
Casey, did you contact all the cities too as far as?
Yes, I put them all on there.
So they all know.
Yep.
Cause.
Yes, I have that email addresses for all of them, so I put them on there too. Uh, I haven't gotten responses back from the cities yet, but again, I said more to come because when we had further details, I just wanted to get those dates in front of everyone, so they can put it. Because everybody's schedules are so busy and they can start planning that further.
So you want to bring the orange cans to town Sunday, not leaving them at Effingham?
Well, on, you say on Friday?
On Sunday.
On Sunday.
He's already opening an extra day in Effingham.
Yeah, we would be open three days in a row.
Okay.
At Effingham, I wouldn't think.
No, no.
You have Friday, Saturday.
Friday and Saturday would be fine.
Those groups up there, that's gonna be the focus there.
I think I would make mention on the flyer then, uh, Sunday open location.
Yeah.
Where it's, it was a bit, you know, where the dump site for Sunday only.
Yeah, I agree.
So people won't be out there thinking they can still go in.
Mm hmm. Trick's gonna be once that can's full, we're, we're done, which is how the tires used to be. Because we won't have enough staff to haul it. Well, I guess if I called everybody in.
Well, it'd be worth trying to see if the city would give you a trash truck and operator on Friday. So just fill the trash truck and run it out there, then maybe it'll take some pressure off your can.
On what day?
Well, I guess on Friday, maybe on Saturday. So what's the conversation?
Well, I assume Friday they're gonna be still running their regular routes.
Yeah, we have the one truck that was still in the backlog or whatever stuff they're, partly. So it's worth asking.
Yeah.
Otherwise, or Marge or somebody could do it, maybe.
Mm hmm.
You'd cheaper to see the city a little about it.
Okay.
Awesome. So we've kind of nailed down the times and some of the details and so we can put a flyer together and then bring it, but we'll bring it back.
And I'm putting the flyer together.
Oh, okay.
We can do it. I mean, it won't be hard. I just didn't, I just want to be clear on who was doing it, yeah.
If you want to, I just.
I can. Um, Atchison County only, of course.
Yep. And those are, that one's the Platte County one, but, um, I just printed them for example. Leavenworth County had one, two. Uh, I.
Well, I could call her and talk to her.
I'm just dead town that week, you know, I've got a trip planned, but if I do something in advance to stealth out, it would.
Yeah, I'm gonna be out there too. No, but it sounds like a good, sounds like a good weekend to go.
Seems to be exciting to see everybody come together and bitching.
I've helped with the city well several times. It's, it's really kind of fun.
Mm hmm.
People have matching T-shirts and little teams. They were having fun with it.
Awesome. Okay, well done.
And maybe it'll teach kids not to throw the trash out the way it was. They're picking it up.
Yep.
You'd be amazed what they find those, get you sometimes.
Yeah, I know. Yeah.
Okay, next, um, the logos on vehicle. Um.
We are staying here. I mean, it's not on there yet.
Okay.
Coming.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I just didn't get a response. I was just like.
Oh, you probably weren't on the, because I did respond to Kim.
Okay.
But maybe you weren't on my
Come back. I just want to make sure since it was.
We get one of those window ones.
Oh, like the maintenance room?
Mm hmm. We got an order. I would have thought it'd be here by now, but it's not. So.
Um, updated plans.
Um, I contacted him yesterday because I hadn't heard anything from him since I sent in the approval. And he said the construction documents will be ready at the end of March. And then they can go out for bid and the bidding will be three weeks. And then once we award, they can get started. So that sounds like April's when that's gonna happen.
So this is the recycling?
Building and the scale house, yeah.
And the scale house.
Mm hmm. Yep. So, and he told me in the beginning, it's gonna be a while. We're back, uh, so I knew it was gonna be, I didn't know it'd be quite that long, but he did tell me that, so.
Okay.
Well, it's, it's still gonna be delayed, but it's starting, probably a storm on that.
Yeah.
No, no.
Yeah. At least we have a timeline, though.
Yep, yep.
So, awesome. Good, thank you. Yeah. Yeah. Um, okay, so the next was Ken, Joint Communications Director Resolution Update. Um, I put the resolution update on here and the bylaws on here just because it's been something that we didn't get finished yet and I wanted to follow up on it. Uh, also wanted to ask a question in regards to bylaws. Are the advisory boards the one that typically write the bylaws for their board or? The, the reason I'm asking is it was told to me that the boards typically write their own bylaws. And as many advisory boards as we have with community corrections, now senior village, joint communications, all of them, if there was a way to more of have a, a template or something where it's not recreating the wheel every time we have a board. And then also from, I talked to a gentleman that serves on two of our boards that thought, well, that would be good too, because all the things of the board I would remember serving on a county advisory board. So I just wanted to get your guys' thoughts on that and, and visit about where we were at.
Yeah, it seems it would be kind of consistent between them. They're all advisory, right? Who has most territory already.
Right.
So, so I recommend that they, so yeah, I would think we use kind of standard template.
As far as, um.
Keep it simple and use.
Yeah, like.
Pretty routine, remember appointments, terms, meeting times, things like that.
Because at the senior village advisory board last week, um, someone had asked me about like the absentee, like how many times can you miss before you're, you're off the board? Because you have this many people serving, you don't want to waste your time showing up and not everyone comes, so, um, just wanted to kind of get you guys' thoughts.
I think a lot of the basic stuff could be on a template, but then when you actually get down to what their individual mission is, would, that would veer off because I don't think that could be a template.
Right.
You know, so I, I think that that would be a good goal and as we maybe update resolutions, I don't think we would want to dive into like changing all of like in one year, trying to go through all of the different boards and make them, you know, do that, but as we maybe update or create new ones and have that, follow that template eventually, they'll get worked up into that form. I mean, so, uh, you know, because we're, we're actively wanting to do some of these, uh, updates that are so far out. If we do have a template to, to follow, I think that would be a good idea. And kind of as we get to them, try to apply that.
We're kind of mostly joint communications and senior village right now, right?
Well, right now, yeah, because I know our county counselor has provided like rough draft bylaws, um, um, that he sent to me, but do I need to send that then in turn to the board for them to? Like, I, I guess I'm just trying to understand who puts bylaws in place for these boards because we're meeting and there's, we don't have bylaws.
I think their board needs to approve it first and make their, get their draft together and they come to us for a final approval.
So the advisory boards.
Well, if, if we have a, a template, I think we would supply that and then they would work on it first.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, both both you as a board and, uh, advisory board need to sign off on it. I don't know. I mean, I don't think we have enough of these that we really have a history of it. Um, of how it's been done in the past. But it would need to, it should really be approved by both, uh, both the board and this board. And this board needs to give enough direction of what you want from them. And that could either be in the form of a resolution or it could be in the the bylaws if you will. So.
Because for instance, like the joint communications board, that's been in together since what, two thousand fourteen? And that was one of, the, one of the flaws is they didn't have bylaws. And, and so again, it's like, who's, who's just understanding whose job, so we can make sure we're getting it done.
I think studying on, on both boards that the commission should create the bylaws. Give them to the advisory board and say, do you agree with this? Do you not agree with this? Edit them if you want. And then once they approve, the commission should agree. Because you're asking a group of people, joint communications and multiple county employees, so sure, we'll do it. But the senior village, those people are not county employees. Those are people that are out of the friends of their heart coming to help senior village, so why are we, man, it's gonna be a little busy work. When we can create a draft of bylaw and say, here you go, do you agree with this? And they say, yes, you're done.
Okay, so that's all we need to do because the county councilor's already done that for us, for a rough draft, for bylaws for senior village. So just send it to the advisory board, do they agree? And then bring that back to us to make sure we agree with.
Yeah, I'm gonna see before it goes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
On that, would they need to sign a HIPAA?
They did.
Okay.
Yeah. I got all of them on file.
Good.
Not sure where you guys. And again, I'm just putting them on here because they're things that we hadn't gotten done yet. So, and maybe you want to wait for your first board meeting to come back about.
So you send the draft, I mean, there's likely to be a couple of tweaks, I mean, just inevitably, so. Yeah. We have time in today to look at that, we could.
Okay. Okay.
Shouldn't be too complicated.
And then we have, uh, a purchase order for approval, um, from joint communications. Vendor is Huber and Associates, um, in the amount of five thousand four ten thirty nine. Kim, do you want to say anymore about that or?
Um, no, just that this was a, through her, her Huber and Associates. Um, Wes, do you wanna, because it's for IT? Correct?
Yes. Did that come from you last or who did it come from?
Well, so Huber and Associates is who, um, joint communications uses for their RMS and CAD system, well, RMS for sheriff, CAD system for dispatch. Um, so the top line item for the one thousand one fifty six is the VMware, which makes their two physical virtual servers host their eight virtual servers. So it's legacy thing that's important. Um, the second line item is the maintenance on their, um, on their IBM system, which is what houses the RMS and the CAD. Um, so that's actually split out between the thirty eight, thirty one would go out, that computer services for the sheriff and the board, twenty three, twenty would go into the joint communications for their, their CAD software. So it's just like the invoice that we have for TS Connor that we're splitting. Um, it's just like that, but she is going to have this invoice until she no longer has, because both the sheriff and, um, joint communications is looking at changing their RMS and and their CAD system this year to a newer updated platform. So that is for now, an invoice that will pay yearly until they switch away from that system and move to a newer.
If they switch before the year, is that, do we get credit back? So that is paying. Let me see that again. Just like, I want to speak out of turn.
Yes, if they end, if they end before the end of the year, I'm on. By the way. We would ask her for a refund.
Okay.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this purchase order, um, from joint communications for Huber and Associates for five thousand four ten thirty nine?
Also move it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll say it.
The movement is seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Okay, senior village, um, so I had mentioned that we had senior village advisory meeting last week. And, um, the board was able to meet with, um, an interim administrator. Um, after their board meeting, um, they made a recommendation to, um, uh, to move forward with contracting with this individual, um, for sixty days. Um, the county counselor has, um, prepared a memorandum of understanding, uh, for that. And I, based on their recommendation, I would like to, um, make a motion to approve David Mercier as our interim administrator, beginning Monday, February thirteenth, um, for a sixty day contract with option for renewal. Do you have any questions?
I would like to see, well, you at some point, not at this minute.
Um, so I emailed last week to make sure it was going to be done, um, and county counselor assured me he would have it for us today.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to see it also before approving.
I would like us to approve this today, um, uh, because his start date will be before our next meeting.
Okay.
So.
Hold it a little bit later.
Okay, sure. Yeah, so we'll just wait.
We'll get.
Yep. Um, another recommendation that they had was switching, um, the pharmacy to, uh, DC drugs and the advisory board again approved that recommendation. Um, a lot of these things are only coming before us because we don't have an administrator. Like, once the, once there's an administrator in a department head, like some of these little we have nothing to do with, but we just want to make sure that that transparency of what the boards are recommending and what they're doing, uh, comes before us, so, uh, they are looking to switch.
Why is there a switch? And is that something that we should have wait until we have a, uh, administrator?
So the interim administrator was there in part of the discussion as well as the board. So the interim administrator was there in part of the discussion, as well as the board, um, which was very telltale. Why we need this aboard, because when the recommendation was posed and the reasoning behind it. They just went around the room of chiming in of why they agree with that, because X, Y, and Z, based on their medical experience and and their experience and and all the things, so. It. It's not costing more, it's better customer service, there's several reasons why um, it allows our nursing staff to be. More on the floor and not tied up on a prompt, so there's and and also um, this company has local. Uh, references from other homes in our area that that have been good, so.
These are atory.
Yeah, so it sounds, sounds good, I just.
I'll I'll move to make that switch.
Okay, it's been moved. Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass this three to zero. Um, we touched on the bylaws um, on that, so we have that rough draft that we will review and get to the advisory board. Um. We had talked about previously looking into an audit of senior village for the past five years. Um, wanted to just revisit that with you guys. I reached out to um, a local CPA to ask if they are familiar with these, if they do these. Um, after conversation, the suggestion was to go to the county auditor, so I did that, um, had conversations. With him about kind of our needs, and for some reason, his last email was deterring from doing that, so. Again, I don't, I don't know how you guys feel about that, um, I brought it up to the advisory board, I mean, it's kind of a clean slate. Of new administrator coming on, advisory board, all the things for twenty twenty three. Do we feel like we wanna do an audit for the past five years or not, and then based on that? We can talk about how to move forward.
Why five years?
Because that was the number that was brought up in conversation in previous workshops, and that covers, so we've been under contract with the new for two. And then that would be. The county too, I mean, just looking back.
Is there anything about cost, I mean, what would the?
No, I was just trying to find, find that out, but then the recommendation was not to do it, so I was like, well.
I'm all for an audit, I wonder what you do to find it. How deep the audit is, there's different kinds of audits, and also the timeframe. To me, if you go, I I'm just gonna throw out three years, I would think would be. The three, I mean, five seems like a long time. Maybe, maybe it's not, it just seemed like a long time, which means a lot more money. I think we could do the last two or three years, if we find a lot of problems, we're gonna say, we better go back another year to. Kind of lead towards that.
So I would definitely lean three. For sure, or beyond, I've been on the, uh, as the senior village commissioner on. The board for two years, so I definitely wouldn't wanted to just encompass my time, because there were problems prior to. At a commissioner even being involved.
Right, that's that's I was gonna add that, because there wasn't like, assigned commissioner before that.
Yeah.
You know, a good RFP on this, you know, and put out smarter terms and say, here's what we need or want.
Okay, and what is it we need and want?
That would be a good question for an accountant that's much smarter than me on this.
I was kind of, okay. Alright, so all all.
Find what kind of an audit, or maybe talk to your interim administrator, I mean. Did the advisory board have any, did they discuss this at all about having someone audit?
I mean, yeah, I brought it up to them and they were all. They weren't opposed to it.
Okay, I I I thought maybe there'd been recommendations, because that might be a. A specialty with a medical field, that I don't know whether the county with some the. Auditors might not be uh, the the best suited.
So, yes, he recommended if we decide. I'll just tell you his last, um, he can recommend someone that that he's worked with in the past, um. Here, but his best recommendation was just have a CPA start looking at the activities over the past five years. But not an actual audit.
Start that.
So.
Investigatory.
To where, like an outside person would come in and start digging around, asking questions, looking at it. Not a, not a full blown audit. But if we wanted to do that, there's um, a company in Johnson County that he had a few years.
It seems like. There's so many moving parts, I mean, I don't know if just a CPA can come in and understand, because. Of all of the lingo, the acronyms, the uh, the health. Um, you know, your Medicare, Medicaid, they're. How they work, that I think you would almost have to have that specialty to actually have somebody come in and. Do anything comprehensive that understands how all of these things are. The requirements and the interactions of them, so, I mean, I. I think if you had something specific and it was just on billing, maybe you would have a CPA look, but I mean, I think an auditor. Uh, if you were doing something comprehensive, would have to dig deeper.
Okay, so how about I follow up with him on that Johnson County, get some info on what other companies we could do an RFP? And.
Yeah, like my free year, yeah, my job to uh, even pass a year or something, just get a couple of different ideas.
She um, has actually do suggested the county auditor.
Yeah.
Um, okay.
But you know, by the time they would actually be able to do this, it's gonna be like late summer, I bet. I mean, you're talking tax season and then planning for an auditing, it's scheduled out, so. I doubt it would be quick.
But we feel, we still feel.
Oh, yeah. I would pursue it and see what we find out on the, you know, uh. You know, we ultimately may not choose to do it, but you know, I I'd be more interested in in looking more forward.
Okay. Um, monthly management dues. I can't remember if I put that on there, but I know I was involved in an email um, with uh, an invoice. That had some questions, so Michelle was looking into that, so I don't really have anything to update on that.
Management dues for?
A new.
Oh.
There were several invoices that hadn't been taken care of, and so invoices uh, in addition to our monthly fee. And so we were trying to dig into what exactly those were. But I haven't gotten up yet on that, so. We're running ahead of schedule, but since Wes is here, are you okay with that? Um, alright, Wes Lander?
Simone.
No.
Okay, so on the agenda is the discussion of the AudioEye platform for our website, our website is. Being redesigned and will go live Wednesday between two and four this week with the new design. Um. And there.
Are we putting out media about that?
Yes, haven't done it yet, yes, 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 the plan is yes. Um, so, um, with that, there was questions whether our website was ADA compliant. So the designers, when they design our website, everything that they do in their design regulations. Assures that our website is ADA compliant, um. Keeping it that way, we we would have to be careful if we change any design. Or the content that we put on there, we have to, you know, we have to make sure that it's not. On to that can't be read correctly, if you're colorblind, there's there's requirements. Um, but there's also a platform that they suggest is called AudioEye, um, so I got a quote on that. Um, but they don't guarantee that their platform will keep us ADA compliant, and it's forty one hundred dollars a year. For this platform, so I sent the the quote to Pat and he agreed, their contract doesn't state that they will keep us. ADA compliant.
It's claims that warranty, isn't just that they don't claim that they they tell you, we do not promise that this works. And.
Is there a company that does?
Not that I know of.
So it's the ADA stuff, it's just litigation driven, so it's probably the concern, I would imagine.
It it is, and I think it's also that. There are several websites that you can go to to get a free search of whether your website is compliant and. Um, you know, almost all of them are going to find that the website fails for some reason, so that they can sell you the service. There haven't been. There hasn't been a lot of litigation about. The type of nitpicking things that. That they were talking about in the reports that that I ran on my own. About our website, the proposed website, things like. When when you put a, an image up, you should have a descriptive tag for it, so if somebody's reading, reading it through a. Machine that reads it to you, that it can tell what it is, that there hasn't been litigation about that, those were the type of. Um, errors, if you will, that that uh, that they were finding. Um, in looking at our website.
Which we do that, every time we post something, there's there's a descriptive tag when you're posting it, that we try and, we don't put a paragraph in there of what it is, but. Right, I describe basically what we're posting.
Well, and they they go down to every little. Picture on there, if there's a little Facebook in it, you can click to go to Facebook. Some of them, that they just said Facebook, that was good enough, but then some of them wanted it to say. Link to external Facebook website or some, you know, something like that, just the. And I, I think it's really unlikely that. We would be involved in any litigation about, oh, yours just says Facebook, I, this more specific. So.
What is your recommendation?
I don't wanna spend the forty one hundred dollars on something that doesn't guarantee that it's any more than what we're currently doing.
That's. Was it guaranteed? Yeah, so. You know, if they specifically spell out that it doesn't take care of that, I I. And you think that we are. Pretty close to being compliant anyway, I mean, it's not like we are. Uh, out of compliance.
That way, I think we are, we are compliant, or we aren't compliant, we are in.
Well, I uh, with without the little picky things you were talking about, that's.
But I don't think those are violations of the ADA, I wouldn't, I wouldn't conceive that those are violations or that that's not compliance, but. Those are the type of nitpicky things that would would show up when we have. When we ran our. Website through those testing. Mechanisms.
I'm following your recommendation. So the audio was the one main area that was.
The AudioEye is what the software is called that they use, um, and that's through Civics Plus, which is who we. Host our website through their company down in Manhattan, um, and the contract states that they. Will not say that we're ADA compliant, we, I mean, whenever, whenever we post content, we try everything to. You know, write those descriptions in there that he's talking about as best we can.
Now, does Civics Plus, I mean, are they? Pointing us in under all those, these directions that would take care of the.
So when it comes to their design, they make sure that their design that they, which you'll see on Wednesday afternoon, um, that everything. Starting from then, moving forward is ADA compliant. As far as the colors and the pictures and the font color and all of that is all ADA compliant. So the only thing that that could change, to my knowledge, would be if we posted and. Some or a bid document or something like that, and we forgot to put the description on there of what this is. That's the only thing that I know that could take us out of compliance.
Okay.
From my knowledge.
Yeah, I don't whisper the twenty one hundred dollars on that, it's not a guarantee.
Forty one hundred?
Yes, I said.
Five, I thought you said twenty.
No.
Um, isn't there a change already, cause I noticed when I went to uh, log into my county email, and now it says. Old and new, so what happens?
Yes, so we're um, in the process, the county commission signed off on the. Um, we're changing from exchange to uh, three sixty five, we're in the process this week of doing that. Um, so all the employees, we're gonna sit down with them on an office, my office. Switch, and we will. All their emails from their old, load them into a new, give them their credentials, which are actually the same credentials, but. We'll apply them into the new system, so they'll they'll switch over, um, we have a schedule, which I didn't bring with me. Um, of this week is all of the courthouse, um, offices, and then, so we will get with you three commissioners. Not today. But um, this would you probably old to the new, when it comes to your computer, we're going to log on to your computers. And we'll do it for you, and it'll be a quick, simple process, and you won't have to do anything. Um, but after we do that, if you decide to check your web mail, you'll wanna click on the new link instead of the old link.
Okay, but once we get in it, will it be any?
Looks ideal, though.
Okay. Alright.
Yeah.
So I think, apart from log me in for some kind of an update, and he's in, is your password, and also just now I can get off the internet this morning. If you throw me off, so I don't know.
So I need to look at that then, um, to log me in, that's funny that you say that, cause that's my P O that I wanna talk about.
Same way.
That's an excellent segue, um, I also presented the commission with a P O for, it's called. Log me in is changing their name from Log Me In to GoTo, I don't know why, but they are, um, so it's time for our yearly renewal on that. Um, which is the software that the IT department uses to access all of our county computers remotely. Um, and that is um, for the remote basic plan, is what what we pay for is three thousand four hundred and seventy nine ninety nine a year.
Seems steep.
It's actually cheap compared to a lot of remote softwares, um, that's why we're with them, and we've been with them since two thousand and eleven is when we first started this company. Um, and I've negotiated um, a lower price every year, um, but that's far cheaper than the what. Yeah.
Usually quite a bit, though, eventually.
Uh, every day.
Yeah.
Every day, multiple times a day, I'm moving.
Right.
Instead of, you know, the person has an issue, instead of us driving to them to fix their problem, ninety nine percent of the time. We log onto their computer remotely and fix it. Within minutes, instead of the time it takes us to drive to them, and then fix their problem. Unless it's a hardware issue, if a computer shuts down, clearly, we can't remotely log on to it, so then we physically have to go touch it then. Any questions on that?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve um, the I T P O to go to technologies in the amount of three thousand four seventy nine ninety nine?
Second.
Okay, and second, all those in favor say aye.
Alright, aye.
For you of that, I'll still.
Use it now, anyway.
So we, we, there could be some wireless issues in this building, I don't know if you other two are having those same problems.
Was work.
Because we are, remember, we're replacing all the wireless A Ps in the courthouse, so we've.
Yeah, so, I was on it. I don't think, you know.
The the launch date for the new website Wednesday, and then you're gonna do department head training for all the department heads, so they.
After its life, yes.
So they can start up doing their own information.
And instead of, originally, we were going to pay Civics Plus to come in and do that, and. I'm just gonna work with them, cause nothing is changing on the designs or on the administrative side, so instead of paying that company to come in. Um, and show us how to do stuff, I'm just gonna work with the department heads. On the schedule that meets their schedule and show them how to change their page and and put their information on.
And how, when do you think you'll have that?
Um, probably started next week, um, reach out to them and see when's available for them to do so. So.
Good, I'll survive.
Uh, real quick, since we're running ahead, do you mind if, um, I added Angie Kreider too, because she had emailed us. Um, she wants to come on February twenty eighth. Um, and Michelle confirmed with her, as long as she confirms back. That's tentative of Auntie coming um, before us on February twenty eighth. To talk about uh, grants that are coming up, there's a grant at the end of February from the state. Um, and then she's gonna talk about the status of the FCC maps and broadband cover coverage. Um. And then talk about other grants, federal and, so, February twenty eighth, she wanted to review with Wes the information that we. Which was a little confusing, I'd like you to explain that, because, so we put out on our website, remember, to gather the data. But then K A C was having that push, that our data didn't work for them.
Correct, so, um, we got. The data that we put out, and it's only around a hundred and sixty people actually submitted useful data. There was two hundred and twenty-ish total submissions, but. Some of those submissions, the difference between those are people in other states, I don't know how they saw it and why they. Why they did this speed test, but the people in other states or other counties don't do us any good. Um, so, we have that data, um, but when K A C and the same Kansas was doing their challenge of the. But when K A C and the same Kansas was doing their challenge of the F C C maps. They don't want us to give them a spreadsheet with our data, and that they wanted us to go out and click on every. Property and do a speed test using their software from, which is not gonna happen.
And this has been like the third attempt for us to get data from our constituents. They're gonna get sick of it and be like, I'm not doing any of it.
Yeah. Um so, we can use our data when it comes to working with Rainbow or applying for a grant. Um but but using our data and trying to give it to the state or federal government, they don't want.
But even our data, a hundred and sixty people isn't gonna help us, really.
No, it it, we needed, we needed to be in the thousands for that to be productive, and I I keep sharing it and and. Um but. A hundred and sixty is. I'm glad that they did it, but it's not enough to. To do us any good.
Well, and so that's another thing of just understanding what the need really is, right? Because. Rainbow is a company. Then you have, you know, Quickcon, T Mobile, all these companies, I got this in the mail, Mercury Broadband, like. They're they're everywhere and you can drive out in the rural parts and see the. Spikes in the yards, you know, hey, I have Quickcom, high-speed internet and all the things, so it's hard to know. I mean, other than when we started talking about utilizing ARPA on on uh fiber internet, people were just. Yes, yes, you know, but. Beyond that, I don't know how we. Gauge, because that's what we have ju- uh that gentleman came before us from Cummings that said, you know. Hey, it's not as bad as I feel, cause with my A T and T, you know. And going out there, I have zero service, but when you have uh Century Lane or Verizon, like they don't miss a beat out there. So there's options, it's just not what. Cohesive options, I guess.
Correct.
So.
And a wireless option is not as reliable as a um hard connected. Internet option is. I'm not saying they don't work, I'm just saying in storms and bad weather, a wireless can go down, whereas something buried in the ground typically does not. So.
I just wanted to let you guys know that because there's a lot of people passionate on this one way or another. And so, just to be. Be informed that she'll be here to share information with us at.
Let's just keep pushing the fiber, but it's gonna be take a long time, then it's expensive for a mile and it's just a. It's it's tough.
Fiber is the best solution long term, um but it will be as expensive and it will take you a while. I agree.
So in turn, internally, do we, I mean, I know you've been the point person to, but. I feel like when I say that, you're the point person for so many things in Axerson County that I'm like, do we need to? Well, I guess should, if it's. A priority for Axerson County, do we need to put together a group that focuses on assisting? You know, with with. I don't know.
Yes.
I'm just asking.
The answer is yes, I don't know who or how, but.
It just feels like, and I know my constituents or even constituents of other districts are frustrated with me, they feel like. I'm not doing enough when it comes to this topic, but it's like.
It's impossible to stay up with all that. I've all the options and all of the grand processes and all of um the regulations that they have.
And I'm.
And do something and and do your other job. So I cannot stay up on all the options. There's meetings all over the state all the time, then I can't attend them all because. So I don't have no time in the day. Um so yes, but. I don't have the answer, I don't have the solution.
I don't need that, that's fine.
So, I mean, yeah, I would love to find the magic button that says, yes, we can provide high-speed internet to all of our. All of our citizens everywhere throughout whole county, including myself. Because I usually do it in internet providers to to keep myself, my house. Up today, but I don't, I don't know the solution. I don't have the magic easy button. But. Just try, you know, it's always.
I mean, yeah, and I C C U N, I mean, I've tried to reaching out to someone.
She'll also receive something, she forwards it to me also, but which is great, because. There's some something that's enough that I never get, so if I don't get it from you or from her, then I never see it.
Okay.
Starling, you know, that's that's been pretty good, I think.
Yeah, there's certain technology, there's lots of options, it's if you can afford those options, that's another thing, because.
Yeah.
Some of the op- only options for people out in the rural rural areas is very expensive options that they can't afford. So.
What's like a pricing issue roughly?
I mean, you look at a satellite option, and satellite is not the best solution, but it is the only solution for some. And you're talking six, eight hundred dollars, thousand dollars in hardware, and then the expensive monthly. Internet fee.
Yeah, okay, true. Okay, what are we obligated for? I mean.
I mean, the the F C C maps, we have excellent coverage everywhere, every type of landmark there is, but.
Yeah.
It's not the case, that's not the truth. So. And the only way to challenge those is was for people to log on from their home and to go through the states, the F C C maps. Go through the state's template, which we shared, there's, I mean, we're also. I signed up for Ashen County to be a partner in the. I don't have the information, I promise, I won't say it wrong, but uh. Do you remember?
Yeah, he said it was fine to do without me.
Yes, um. Trying to get better internet service to Kansas, and so I signed up with the governor's initiative. Um I haven't been through the class. There you go, that. Um I haven't been through the the orientation class to see what all we need to do or what we can do yet. Um because I haven't studied yet, but hopefully it's something that will help our citizens when it comes to internet, so.
Yeah, it's an important issue. It's economic development, it's education, there's something we work on line at home and. We don't have that avenue, it does have an impact on our our locally economy.
There's a huge push of people about working in their offices anymore and working remotely and you can't do that if you don't have high-speed internet.
We have a lot of people around here that work from their home, they work out their firm in Kansas City or California, Texas, wherever.
Yeah, so it's about all, we'll do what we can to.
Yeah.
Do the best we can.
We're still pretty good with schedules, and you guys are okay to keep going down the list, and some of these were, I'm still getting used to the new meeting. So like a couple of these, I probably gonna let off here, but um. I requested a new twenty twenty-three list um from Martha at N E K S, so she um. That's like the first step of nuisance when they come in to us, um her complaints. Is we send them to northeast Kansas to start an investigation, and then they keep kind of tabs on, they go out, they look, they give us. A copy of the letter, what they found, all the things, and then they start the timeline, and then eventually some of the timelines get to. Where legal action um kind of goes in. Uh we talked about tweaking that. Last year with some of the information Pat learned on a different way to handle some of those. I can't remember the terminology, but. Remember you were talking to someone about another county, how they handled them or something, and you were like. So I guess the pro- it just, for constituents looking from the outside is like, we don't do enough to get our county, like these properties cleaned up, but. There's a process, and so for twenty twenty-three, I hadn't talked to uh them. Since August of twenty twenty-two, so I just requested like, what's twenty twenty-three look like, so I can kind of stay on top of. Making sure the process. Keeps moving forward, cause there are a couple individual properties that were brought to me from a constituent. And now I'm on my second year and they're still, you know. It it's not quick though, um but I do want to make sure that I convey and communicate that there is a process. And what the process is, and and if we need to change the process or how we can make the process better, um.
Most of the process is statute-driven, I think. I mean, there's just a lot of property rights and notice notifications, there's a lot of things, so. It just takes time. They should be. Here uh in the near future with the sanitation codes that are gonna be. Uh that are proposed. And so. I would say. Sooner rather than later, they will be here to propose them, which part of that is this nuisance. Um ordinance that we have, it was suggested that it would be rolled into the sanitation codes. If we do that, it will. That'll be another. It it would take longer to do that, uh and they were all for that, except for, I think they're anxious to to. Work on the sanitation codes, and if we have to incorporate that, it'll take longer to put the nuisance ordinance with it, so. That one of the questions will be, do we want to continue and have it separate like it is now? I don't know whether. It will change any of the implementation, only it would just be more cohesive in the sanitation codes, so. Uh it's one of the things that they'll talk to us about.
And when they come, they'll have a recommendation from their advisory board that these have been accepted by then.
These have been drawn. Up. From what Martha's went through, what was had, other updates in terminology and uh. You know, testing limits and things like that, that's all of the nuts and bolts that are in there, plus. Incorporate the uh. Findings from the public. Uh meetings that they had. And so then it will be, and so then this will be their their final draft. And it will bring it to us, and that will be on the sanitation end of the poll. I I do, and then if we choose that we want to review, update, or change the. Nuisance ordinance and put it with it, it will take a while.
Okay.
So we could, in theory, if, and we will have, uh we can. Change it, yeah, I mean, it's, when we review it, if there's something we like, we don't like, we can take it out. Uh and change it around, and then we, they will either go ahead forward with the uh. The sanitation codes without it, probably do that soon, and. If we want the nuisance ordinance, it'll take a while before we pass the whole thing together.
Okay, cause I remember when she put the draft in front of us two years ago, we were all like. Oh wow, that's a lot to absorb, so we suggested that they put that community group together for county-wide feedback from constituents. Real estate agents, all the things, attorneys, Rode and Bridge, there was a a group of. People, so as long as they're recommending for us to adopt, I think that would be helpful, um.
Yeah, I mean, it, I I think there's, that's a view, and that will be, they will make the case according to. What as the, as the organization. Uh runs this, what what their recommended, recommendation will be, you know, it will be slanted towards that, but. Part of it is probably some um political um. And uh. Decisions we'll have to make, you know, that we, they wouldn't have to put these, some of these uh things in there. Do we want to be more restrictive or change things to be more or less? Um it'll be our decision to make things more stringent or not, you know, it. One of the issues with big issues will be whether we require a. Property that changed hands to have an inspection down in the sewer. That would be at the expense of the seller. Uh I think that that would be politically very unpopular with at least my constituents. Now, is, you know, that will be something that we'll have to make that determination, that's not really a determination from them, I think that. They are fine with that, I think that's the way they would rather go, but I don't know if I would support that. So, but I'm 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 still open-minded about what they're gonna bring and what this all looks like, cause even though I'm on that board, I haven't seen. Uh exactly what all was in that proposal, final proposal.
Okay.
And one thing that delayed it even further was that the state had came out with a template after she had basically went through everything. They came out with a template dealing with the same thing, so she went back over it to incorporate their updated template. Into, so it it took a lot longer, cause she had basically go through it twice.
Okay. Thanks for. And you don't know a date on that one yet, right?
No, um and I requested that when she gets it done, that it be sent to Pat and to us immediately, so. Because it is, it's it's a lot to absorb and. Yeah, I'd I'd actually like to read through it, maybe. Us discuss it first before they get here, because I think each one of us might identify different problems and and so. I'll try to make sure that that gets sent to us first.
Okay, um I have a letter. That. I would like to make a motion, um. Let's see here. Actually, Eric, do you want to explain the appointment of?
Yes.
Megan Doman, I think since you serve on that board, you'll do a better job of explaining.
Uh, this is to the N E K E S board, uh. We're two counties, since we're a part of that board, there's two county uh representative, representatives. Uh a commissioner and a health, it's normally the county health official. And uh since Lori Forgy left last, oh, late fall, I believe it was. Um the the position's been open and it's kind of fell through the cracks that no one uh submitted uh and. Uh Megan Doman to take the place of Lori on the N E K E S board. So uh it's, and we wanted to check because she's. Been very, very busy, she's going to nurse at school and everything. I wanted to make sure that she would have been willing. And I did discuss it with her, and she's very willing to be on the board. We have quarter, just meet quarterly, we've already had our first quarter meeting, so. Be three more meetings this year, and she evidently, did she, there's a sort of letter from her. Or is this?
This is a letter that. Whether or not we want to approve to to add her to the board. So I would make a motion to up um add Megan Doman, L P N, Atchison County Health Department to serve as a representative for Atchison County. On the northeast Kansas board.
And I'll second that. Who's the letter from?
Yeah. It's kind of an appointment letter that I do when we appoint the commissioners to different appointments.
I approached Michelle because the the board uh let me know that we hadn't updated our appointment. And so I got with Michelle and after I talked with Megan, make sure that it was okay with her, and then she forwarded.
Moved in second, and all those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero. Congratulations, Megan, on your appointment to the board.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, the next is a discussion on the purchase order for League of Municipalities. Two thousand twenty-three membership dues. Um the total for the dues would be nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars sixty-three cents. Um it's a base fee of seven fifty with population of one seventy-eight sixty-three charge.
I haven't heard. Much feedback as far as that. It uh we we initially went, we hadn't been for years uh a member. And we kind of done it on a trial basis, and I haven't heard uh. Much feedback in the positive that we've really gotten much from, but I'm not, I could be. Correct me if I'm wrong, but.
I was just gonna correct myself on the name, so I was trying to remember. Um this, last year was our first year that we joined this as a county, and we did it based on the recommendation of Commissioner Bauer, he knew Ed Satorius.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that the right name?
Yeah.
Okay, that's a name sticking out in my head that I couldn't find it, but. Okay. Okay, so that was like the connection of dis- discussing it. Um and so I'm, I was open-minded and I was like, absolutely, like the more we can be connected to organizations to help us, the better. Um with that being said, I've, I attempted last year to um network with them. Um I sent in updated information, cause they still had information from Axison County for like, before Eric and Jack's terms, like. It was just, uh. I was not impressed with that connection. Now, with that being said, I have relationships with other folks that are in government through the city. That when they get the lead information, they send it, and then that's helpful. Um but I couldn't navigate that myself, and then also with the K A C and the league, really, they partner together and communicate. Um as well, so a lot of that, like at the K A C events, we would hear about the league through that, and that. The K A C for me was very much more fitting um and resourceful in order to, you know, reach out for. For assistance.
Paying the county needs more.
Than the league, um, unfortunately, that was just my first experience from twenty twenty-two. And I I utilize these networks. I try really hard to, so um, I. I don't think I would be in favor of joining again based on twenty twenty-two.
I've been doing a lot of league events over the years um, and use them as a resource and they're a great resource. But uh, I think K E C Price serves all our needs. I just went down to the the they had capital, that was the league and the K E C had. Their own meeting for part of the day and then we got together for part of it. But very similar agendas. I mean, there's the issues that differ, but uh, I I I think we're getting one with you from K E C to my guess.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, so we will just let that one aside.
Yeah, we're gonna look at uh. Organizations to get involved with or whatever. I have a more economic development angles as far as. Whether it's Mark or whoever, but you know, to get back into where we're. But the growth we're seeing and the activity and interest in the area, I think there's other ways to spend that money as a membership somewhere. So I'm saying so.
So how would you foresee that partnership?
I have no idea right now. I know we looked into it uh, for the region and.
I know that economic development is critically important for Acheson County. It's just trying to find our fit when there hasn't been a fit for so long. And 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 so that's why, you know, kind of joining on, um, that's how I was of wanting to.
We've been with Saint Joe with um. Okay, okay, thank you. I just were blank. And I went to that was I went to that board meeting several times and. They they just don't really get the job done. You know, for our for we need and they made mistakes, both for you guys and for the city. So. Going from Mocan to Mark is a big jump. But it's probably the possibly the right direction with the broad training they can provide and the resources. So it's worth looking at, I think.
Okay.
Well, we've applied for membership for Mark, but we are. We're dating. We're we're all, yes, we're, that's a good way of putting it. We are part of them through our uh dispatch center is ran with assistance of Mark. Their technology, so um. Yeah, it seems like it was. With Mocan, it was more Mo and not Mocan and uh. But it 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 seems like there's almost a missing layer, like an intermediate size. Because I think we're almost overwhelmed when we get into Mark is dealing with. Big suburban areas. But they have smoke canisters. I I know they do, but but it seemed like a lot of data and stuff I've seen is more driven with the bigger. Right. The bigger urban. Gets us on the stage that with. Yes, I'm not saying that's bad or or anything. It just seems like maybe that there would be a fit for. And I agree. At intermediate sized organization that would be more favored to us, so.
No, no, you're fine.
We should really look into that. Let's. Let's have uh, I can do the guy's team now director. He would come up here, I'm sure, and meet with us and just give us kind of an idea of. How we would both benefit from it. Because I mean, I mean, one of it's mutually beneficial. We have to participate.
Yeah.
And then the more you put in, the more you get out.
Yeah, no, I would just definitely want to invite. Like even the E that group, because they have a good thing going and it's like you don't want to try to create your own. Because it's all like the more we can all work together, the more impact we can have. So.
At that little maybe we're kind of just fishing.
Yeah.
Those conversations.
That'd be awesome. Um, okay, I put um, RFPs on here just because of the timelines. Um, I had a conversation with Brian the other day and he talked about an RFP for mowing for this year. Um, and so just wondering, do our department heads. Uh, handle the RFPs or? Do we create the RFPs for them? Uh, because the mowing season is gonna be here.
Well, on this particular one. We we. He actually was going to send it out. But it was way too early and so we talked about redoing and sending it out in the spring, but.
Well, but we talked about doing it in-house, remember? So our time, yeah, our and that's what we walked away with, but then since then, he's had some department changes and more projects for him. And so he and I had a conversation like. He's got a lot going on that mowing, um, I think is an easy outsource. Hire out. Memorial Hall, I think they do.
There were, well, there were several lots.
Yeah, EMS, because the Rotten Bridge does their own and Solid Waste does their.
With this in place, wait for it starts, you know.
So and if we have that from historic, then we can just send the same, basically. Uh, it'll need tweak though, because Senior Village is no longer now that we have the maintenance lawn.
Um, I think that he could send that out. I mean, if it's update. Now, this says auditor for twenty twenty-four. I think that's Pat. Aren't you and haven't you? Historically done that?
I've done those RFPs um, in the past, yes.
And feel free to speak up if if. If others, because that's what we get into, right? Is everybody's willing to help and do things, but if we have a template. And a department head can do their mowing RFP or the commission can look at an audit with the clerk audit RFP like. As long as we have the same template, I mean, it doesn't always have to fall on your shoulders, I feel like.
I just believe that Pat has done these in the past for uh, the auditor.
And this is our last year with with them without RFP, right? Wasn't it? Yes, I thought so.
I think that's what you said.
Yeah, this is our third one. Okay.
So do you want to send out an RFP now or? Audit services for the twenty twenty-three fiscal year?
So I'm just, I just put it on here for guidance of timelines, because the last one we sent out was September. So September for the following year, so making sure we have it on our radar that September of this year, then we'll send out.
The audit that they're going to start doing is the twenty twenty-two audit of the last year, so that's what I'm.
Oh, that's the one you're you're asked.
So we're under contract for that?
Yes, we're okay, we're still under contract. Um, and we've usually sent them out in the third quarter for the. For the four, I guess, was that when in September?
So that's for the twenty twenty-two.
No, we already have, we're already under contract for the twenty twenty-two.
Okay. On on our sheet, here it says twenty twenty-four, so and I think that's, you know, we're almost a year back, so you have to make sure that it's for the.
That's my type of.
Fiscal year.
Twenty twenty-three.
Three, okay.
Okay, so we're good to move forward with both RFPs for those. Mowing. Audit. Um, I put under RFP construction for courthouse renovations, just. To keep those conversations going as far as. What needs outsourced versus what we can do internally, um.
Brian's been handling that, doing, I think, a great job.
So he does an incredible job. Uh, my fear is timelines and projects and after discussions and we need, we need to have some numbers and projects kind of. Timelines.
He told me he did talk to some contractor about.
He brought some up. Debbie was saying he met with her and a contractor um. To get some numbers together. So I just for us of making sure, because it kind of goes right into the next one of the ARPA. I feel like we have big projects kind of in limbo and so we can't really. Because the courthouse was our. Um, number one focus when we talked about it and we.
Infrastructure.
Yeah, that was that courthouse was number one and then Rotten Bridge followed as number two. Um, and I know we're getting some projected costs and. But we don't want to forget what our what our number one was, so just making sure our. Conversations and timelines and cost estimates are all coming together.
I think any of those projects that are pushed out the furthest are the ones that. In a way are going to be the most without any numbers or estimates, you know, these, I think a lot of the renovations that happened this year, well, it's. While we are discussing it, we won't have any problem with the ARPA funds, but when we're kind of trying to get down at the end of. Those. Things that are allotted for ARPA and they, we haven't got to them yet, that's when we're gonna start really feeling the crunch of. What, how much to plug in for those? Right now, we can rely on the actual costs as they come in, so.
I just know how time sneaks up, it feels like, and it's like allocate by twenty twenty-four, spend by twenty twenty-six and we're February twenty twenty-three, it's like. Time flies when you're having fun, right?
Can we back up one thing? How do we leave that PRP on courthouse renovations? Is there a timeframe on him to get that going?
Should we give him a time?
Well, yeah, I think time timelines are good.
Yep, I agree. Why? I agree.
I think we just need to have him can maybe come in and update us again about what his plans, because. I know that he's taking the ball and he's discussing it with the department heads and and planning this out. But we really don't know what what that timeline is.
And also in his benefit, he doesn't know our timeline on funding and like, we don't wanna.
Even discuss the mowing and everything, so.
Okay, so I'll put it and get with him for next week.
That's fine.
Okay, so. Do you mind going a few minutes early? We were running ahead of schedule and we just kept going, but I'll back up to you if.
Okay, I think today we have the uh. P O with a striping, straight line striping. And I got ahold of him and if you guys have a copy of the P O.
Yep.
And it figured out twelve hundred and thirty-eight dollars per mile. For a total of twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars on twenty-four miles. Yes, pit opening from last week. Straight line striping, uh, Grand Line, Grand Island, Nebraska.
Alright, so I would look for a motion to approve purchase order to straight line striping, Grand Island, Nebraska, in the amount of. Twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars. That's for twenty-four miles at twelve hundred and thirty-eight dollars per mile for white line striping.
Second, I want discussion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
Was there anything that came from the potential second bid?
Yes, I I've been talking to them the last couple of days. And uh. I resent the bid yesterday just to see if they would get it. And they got it. So I don't know what happened. She claimed they had some trouble with their emails. People doing something with their emails. I didn't quite understand it, how they could send it someplace else and they weren't getting their emails. But.
There was a problem at their end.
At their end, not ours, because yesterday I resent. Just to see to that exact same. Email address and she got it.
Okay.
And then I explained to her uh. Our website and everything and I talked to Mike first and I think she's okay with from now on. I'll make sure I send a re receipt and hopefully they'll. They'll do that. It bothered me too, because Mike called that day and I talked to him and everything was fine. And then yesterday, just to see if if we have the right email address. I resent it and it went right through, so.
Okay, good.
So it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
And then I have a contract for engineering services on Bridge two ninety. With Schwab. And it's for a total of sixty-three thousand dollars. But the payments on that are at different times. Like fifty-five percent of the field check with K dot. And then another forty percent. Uh, when it's submitted to the office check. And then another, the final plans is five percent.
Which bridge is two ninety again?
It's the new, the one we just got up here on uh, three fourteen. And then when they get those. Their their uh, engineering done, then we'll know kind of Pat, how much how much ground we're gonna need and for easement or whatever. So we can move forward with that.
Yeah, that's the one.
To the in the Lewis and Clark, very little bridge and walkway.
Yeah, that's an interesting location.
Yeah, yeah, so. And that has to be signed by the commission.
Okay.
Do you have it?
I I have a copy of this.
Okay.
Does, I have a question on contracts, because this is for Senior Village through everybody. Do you have to review every contract? And then give the Board of County Commission approval to her signature on on things like this or some of the ones that are being funneled through. Um, Senior Village.
I guess that's really a policy question for. You all. You know, I I got that one, for example, on the pharmacy and it was. Twenty pages or something like that and I. I did not read it. And. So I sent an email back, what are you requesting? And you know, I think. The response was, it was just like our other one, I would didn't put in a bracket completely, but I. I'm questioned about it, so.
Okay, so like on this, though, six pages that was in the folder, but I haven't reviewed, so it's hard for me to just say, oh, yes, like. Let's. Even though he needs an answer today, so I'm just asking. And you guys probably haven't seen it, right? I haven't seen it. Okay, well, that's one.
And this is something, I mean, and also they have, it all has to be done through through K dots. Rules and mainly. So that's that's whereas in when it says upon submission of field check plans two K dot required.
What day was it? Oh, I don't have Sunday.
That's probably what I moved into this file, sorry.
Oh, I'm like, I don't see anything Sunday.
I moved into the file then.
Us, but just for my reference, like if you sent this and I read this. It's a contract with an engineering firm. We're good. That can be a department head to commission. We don't have to have. I don't.
I think what what helps this is if you go to part on A. Submit a field check plans two K dot required, so they're explaining. What they have to do through K dot being a requirement and then their percentage. Or what the fee is. And that goes clear through C, clear through every payment, so.
She sent Friday two, February third at two twenty P M.
That's that's when he sent it. That's when he sent it to us, so we just forwarded immediately.
After our workshop.
Yes.
I read through it.
That's bizarre.
You didn't get it?
I didn't.
Would see heading on the email.
Proposed budget picture, building, or you have budget breakout, photos, workshop meeting. Meeting for January.
Creo Clark and Seaford on the third budget breakout and budget breakout?
No. So I don't have my computer with me, so.
Thank you for rescinding it, Ken.
I haven't got it either.
She just forwarded it again. I would like to speed it to our time slot. I'm gonna get with I T on why I wouldn't have gotten that email, because I'm looking back through my timelines. I have a lot for Friday, but I don't see that one. But I'm clearly on it. The only one that didn't get it? No, Eric didn't get it either.
Yeah, I got it. I'm trying to find it working in it. So filed it in my.
So I apologize. I can. Read through it really quick.
Well, I mean.
Yeah, it's pretty self-explanatory. We're just.
This is just part of the, the process.
Yeah.
Eric, if somebody wants these, I've got another copy here.
No, that's fine.
And some of the things are a little bit different with the Kansas local bridge improvement. Program compared to the off system bridge programs, so. Like on the off system, we would go ahead and fire. A consultant to do the same thing, but then when they got ready to do the inspection and stuff, we would send out letters. But on the Kansas local bridge. Program, you don't have to do that, so.
The last two pages are like clauses for what happened. Yeah, I apologize, I. Sorry, because I even had her come out this morning and say, why is this in the folder? I haven't seen this. Sorry, I should have dawned on me then to ask more questions, so why I didn't see it.
And just so you know, that like Schwab Eaton also. Prepared and helped us supply for the. Cost share on this also, so.
Hey, do you have a motion to approve the contract for engineering services for Schwab Eaton for Bridge two ninety?
So move.
They're moving seconded. All those in favor say aye. Again, I apologize.
We, there was a lot going on Friday.
Yeah, there was.
I've got to figure out why I put that email into that folder, can't find the date it came, so I'm not doing something right here. I didn't get that.
So, but no, Eric, I talked, I talked to Mike and then she talked to me yesterday, so hopefully we'll have it all straight.
Right, I just, I wanted to review that before, because I think it's important that, you know, why.
And that's, that's.
And then I know Friday you said you received something you hadn't opened yet from them, and it's like. Before we vote on it, sure, I want to do.
No, it, according to her, there was troubles on her emails, so.
Okay.
But when it went right through yesterday. We, we sent it to the right place. Any, any other questions or anything you guys on it? Ask me.
Any more thoughts on facilities?
Well, I drove out and looked at. At the sites, I know that the, the. The side on the west side of the, of the. There is water and power already there. I don't know what.
Yeah, but Eric, I was talking about, I went and checked it out and I'm, I'm not too sure it would work too well.
Which one was? Yeah, yeah, I kinda.
Actually, I got a walk around part of it.
Yeah.
We could and. I, I just didn't get it work. Yeah.
And then I, then I, you get that map, so. Eric asked about any information we could find, so I've been looking everywhere.
Well, before I approached the owners of this, because I know. Uh, it was Seth at the time that was looking at this and it's like, well, I don't remember the particulars and the commission hadn't done. Any of the legwork and so I felt like just to call them up and say, hey, you want to sell it? Well, it would be started without knowing anything, so it's like, and I, that's good reason. When I saw Roger this morning go by, it's like I want to discuss with him. And, and I had emailed him and Joe both, you know, it's like, is there anything existing on this before I discuss it with them? Uh, you know, I don't want to have to start from. Where one and they're gonna think I'm an idiot if I don't know anything.
But there was a thirteen acre, thirteen acre square approximately, I tried to. If they have their.
That, that was, I don't know why that line was just drawn, it was just like somebody took. Now Roger provided this and he just put in five acre increments. If, just for our gauge to see what it would look like. But I don't think that there was anything.
Yeah, and then.
That.
And then, go ahead, pardon me.
I don't think there was anything on that line. I think that was just what was proposed at the time. There was nothing binding or anything.
I have, today I found a whole bunch of basically. Places like at the landfill right south of where the scale is in two thousand and fourteen, which, but that has still been met.
Yes.
Okay, you know, propose, that was a proposed site then, and we had just had a. So many acres, but I can't find anything on any. Price per acre or prices on any, anything they put that.
That was before me, but I can't remember, it seemed like it never got. That we were actually negotiating.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I just.
These, it was, you know, basically, are we. Are you interested in, in selling? And then it would kind of. Get bogged down and will, how are we gonna fund it? And then it would. Be around.
Yeah, so no, I've looked, I looked around there and then I did find out that there's. Well, I know there's electricity on. From the property to the west, I know there's a water meter there. Uh, but I don't know what, if, what part they would be willing to sell. So I do know that. So I've. So I've found out.
Well, I think that we definitely need to think beyond the, these properties too and, and it's just a place to start.
Yeah, but that's, that's one of the thing, you know, so. Like when I was talking acreage, you know, if it's in the right place, we're gonna have to have either. Lateral's which probably won't work, or we're gonna have to have a again, so that's gonna take up. Some type of area and then what I've been looking at is their water and then their power already there. So that's sometimes a huge cost of trying to get.
And if not immediately, there is it close?
Yes, yes, is it, is it, you know, you go trying to run stuff a half a mile and then you start it. It starts getting crazy.
And fiber was there.
And then that was the other, and I don't know, I don't know how that works. I mean, if it's there at the. Industrial park to get it to go one way or the other, how much that would cost us to get that done.
It's already in Lancaster.
Is it, so they should be as long.
Run it somewhere, I think. Along two eighty six, I think.
I think it runs along this property almost, so just.
You got a map of that fiber? I, well. It followed two eighty six from Lancaster clerk, because it went by, it's all the waste facility. Is on it and it came on into the Hedges, and so I think.
So just because there's fiber buried on the road does not mean that we can tap onto it. Without a large, large expense to do so. Um, so we would need to do our homework to make sure that there's network available.
Good point, okay. Good to know. Well, there probably wouldn't. If there's not already a, a household or something there that would be with a drop. There probably wouldn't be any drops just intermittent there that you could tie into. I mean, so you would have to figure that. Almost any of that property would not have access to it without a major cost.
Correct. How much is a major cost?
Well, that's a good question. What, what would that cost be?
For just estimated or? Um, estimated for the transfer station, it was sixty thousand. But they did not make us pay that full expense, um, because we were doing it when they went through. Um, so they ate part of that expense, so we were just, I would have to get a. A quote from them to. For accurate numbers.
May I just make a comment, and that is that. Uh, before any of you were here, we were already studying and doing various different sites. I don't lock all that stuff in the front of my brain, so that I remember it. Um, if you want more of that stuff, just ask, but we've looked at various different sites, I. I gotta say at least six or eight. Um, over the years and. Um, each of them have their own little issues is why. Uh, probably why we didn't actually lock in on anything. We actually looked at the site on Woodland also. And we've looked at, uh. Uh, you know, just various different, so if you get there and you need some more information, we're happy to get that.
I think we need that. Well, again, a lot of the discussion was, what are we actually gonna all include, you know, so then it boiled down to. How many acres do we need if we're gonna do this or that, you know, it, it, that needs assessment of what we're. Where it's at and what we put there are gonna be the critical. Uh, things, because we're not gonna drive to Lancaster to build. Vehicles, county vehicles, if we're going to Kansas City, you know, people at the court, you know, it's just not gonna, we can't expect. Things like that to happen. I mean, there, there will be some inconvenience.
So I'll ask you a question. Coming from the city, so the city police, they fuel up at Gasoline Alley, that's our sheriff's department. Where do they fuel up? Does anybody know?
Well, sometimes police fuel up. Not that gas, because I've seen him myself do it.
Okay, well, I, I just drove by there this weekend and they were in there getting fuel, so I didn't know.
Contract for so much gas, but I haven't seen the place aside. I don't really know exactly how we're doing that right now.
I didn't know like what the county, where the sheriff's department fuels up at, whether they just do wherever, or whether they have their own.
X cards or probably.
Yeah, I didn't know, you know, because it's, you know, we continue. Consumers to get our. Fuel through there. I mean, they win the bid about every year, that would be instead of, because if you.
One thing.
Right, but I mean, with the gas, we get gas too, just like they do. But it doesn't make any sense, like you said, that put a big gas thing out there for everybody and.
No.
Drive that far, but that's just my.
Well, plus the. Record keeping, reporting.
Well, actually, a lot of those, you have a fob. You have a key fob and it. It.
I mean, the backside of that.
Okay.
Environmental stuff.
Right, well, we'll have, if we do move someplace, we'll have to. Have a fuel system.
Right.
So. I'll bring this up right now, looking at the retriever. Travel retriever and, uh. One of them goes through Sourcewell, one of the vendors goes through Sourcewell, so we will be sending you guys a video of kind of what it does. And we'll discuss that next Monday. I don't want to call them and have them re-figure a bid. And they did it, or Tuesday, pardon me, Tuesday. Right, so, so, uh. And I'll get a. I don't want to get a cost from them until I find out if you guys are on board of, of doing that.
Do we used to have one?
We had one, but it wasn't. They sold it. Then we, basically, we put a new hose on it and we used it last year. And they want half a new price. And I don't like that one, to be quite honest. I don't like the way it's set up. There's different ways they're set up and I don't care for that one. So, that's. I want one with hydraulics, you know, you can tilt it back, it'll still float, you can swing your disc out with hydraulics, you don't have to do it by hand. Well, you can, you can set it with your three point, you set, set it down and you go. If, if I don't want to spend six thousand dollars on one I don't like. Don't feel like it's suitable for us, so. But we'll get that information again, so you can look at it and then we can discuss it. To have a little more time, you can see what it is, you're all good for that.
You've like one of those videos that shows.
Yes, yes, yes.
That was very helpful. What was it last year that?
Did it on, well, it might have been that too, but.
Maybe it was these, um.
The milling machine. The duripatcher we did.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Let's see, and then we'll just. You know, more talk about how we're gonna move forward. I drove down Ottawa twice. Friday and again yesterday. And trying to figure out. You know, if we can afford to do the whole reclamation, what can we afford to do and what can we do? To make it better until we get to that. Does that make sense? If, if you've drove it, you understand it. I mean, it hit more, but we're taking care of more. Just, just kind of food for thought on if, if we are not gonna be able to. Uh, budget. Before that reclamation, what can we do to? Keep us going until we get there. Alright, alright, thank you.
Thanks.
The next was talking about county policies, uh, which was. Perfect timing considering this morning was one of our county, county policy. Meetings, um, so just to bring you up to speed, um. We have had not revamped our employee manual since. The five, two thousand nineteen was the final, last final version, um, so it needed updated and. We started a process of that of. Um, myself and county staff. Um, sitting and going through. At one paragraph at a time, um, but now. With the new year. Um, new commission, wanted to ask you guys if, what your thoughts are on that. When I attended that new commissioner training, uh, to speak at K A C. K camp was there and. I know they're an insurance company, but they do put the fear in you of like, making sure your policies are. Are there and, and, and guess what? Because at the end of the day, whoever can write them, but it falls on us three. And they remembered to drill that in my head over and over, because I've even been part of conversations, the policies where department heads have their own policies. On file and I'm guilty, I've been here two years and haven't even looked at them or asked for them. And like they're giving specific examples of like. Who's responsible, like they're. You know, it's all from a lawsuit perspective, it's, you know, and I feel like. In today's world, it's getting worse, and so just making sure, one, we're not burdening our staff and putting time in. That needs to be updated, you know. I, I don't know what the right answer is, but I just want, I would love for you to, to be included, uh, however you see fit. So we can all be part of this and to be sure that county policies. At every level are thorough, covered and, and we have.
How far have you gotten?
Not very far. We've only started the employee handbook, um. Wes sent us a copy of his, uh, I T policies. Uh, you said that's your work in progress, you're not done with them, right?
There's just a few more edits to make and then they'll be completed.
And then Roden Bridge has theirs there on the website, um. I don't know, I just, I, and I haven't seen like as far as. And I don't really know what kind of liability really plays a effect with us three when it comes to elected officials and what policies they have, but like. For our, our policies. And how we want to handle that. Because that's one of the other things, we've spent weeks writing these policies and talking as a group and, you know, I'm one, I'm big on. Consistency, so if I have a conversation with one person of how to handle something or a policy. It's the same with every department head and I've, I've really tried to do that and I have been told. Um, several times that that's the case with our policies with elected officials. And again. I don't mind going out there and pushing back to say like, it's a policy, it's in the policy, we gotta follow it. And at the K A C. They're doing case law on. I, as a county commissioner, don't have an authority to tell the sheriff that he has to turn in a purchase order, like it's. It's an example in the case law at the K A C, and then all I can think is. Oh, my gosh, like I'm the one that's gonna look like an idiot, but that's the information I've been given that. We require it for all, so, uh. I don't know, it, it makes me nervous and I just want to be nervous with two other people. Because I just, um. Policies are important. We set policy, just like the question of, you know, do we. Policies are important, we set policy, just like the question of, you know, do we require. Our county counselor to read every contract in the county, which is, in my opinion, like. As many departments as we have, like, that's so much time, like. No, RFPs, like department heads, you know. Department heads are in a position for a reason, and like, for some of the things, like keeping up on their website and. Doing their own RFPs and some of the things I think they're perfectly capable of, it's just been morphed into the people that always have done things. So I think this could just be a breath of fresh air for us to revamp them together and. For everybody in the county, department heads and county counselor and everybody to say, hey, you know. It's not always, you know, the policy states a department head can do their own X, Y, and Z, I don't, I don't know.
As long as it complies with the overall. Policies of the county. A lot of these things affect budgets, so very budget services, like what Wes showed us today. I don't know why we need to approve sometimes these things, it's a budgeted thing, it's always been, it's been under contract, it's just the bill can do. You know, maybe it's good to, like a consentage of the thing, just FYI, these are, these are happening. So I, I think the more important part is the employee handbook and all those policies, make sure, when's the last time it was updated? By comprehensively, do you have any idea? Doesn't nine, so definitely there's time. And there's probably not that much that's changing, maybe some clarification, so I mean, I think we can. Now just start going through that right here in our meeting, use so much every week and.
Well, and those are the things, is like streamlining the processes, like for HR, for example, of like. Our department heads were all running their own background checks on new hires, like. No, we have an HR department for a reason, like, we need to, we need to create a, a funnel to where. Anything HR related, onboarding, all the things goes through that department, um. Is one example of the old, the old policy of what we've like kind of revamped since. Uh but again, nothing's been approved by commission as a whole, we're just. Key smelling, like one paragraph at a time, trying to get through it with the people that are willing to sit at the table.
So don't background check everyone there.
So that's where funneling it through HR will ensure we get the answer. And we know the answer, because those are concerns of mine, and 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 when you hear things. And you know you hear things, it makes, like, my antennas go up and I'm like, oh goodness, like, it makes me. We need to cohesively have a.
I think with background checks, the one, the one area would be a little different to me, at least I would think would be the law enforcement side. That doesn't mean that, that's a little more rigorous background check, I'm pretty sure, I'm just guessing. That I think it'd still be good that once that's done by the sheriff, it's, it's shared with HR. I mean, as far as who we hires, but. That's, that's a little different category to me.
At our, um Senior Village.
Some of the senior village stuff will be.
Since the change and the transition with the new, I have enrolled in that, and I am conducting those for Senior Village. But those are very extensive too, and they take a while to get back. So that kind of plays into the start date of the new hire as well. At least they can't start until we get those results back in the past, um that was a reoccurring. Event where a new hire would start and HR would not have the proper documentation to state that they have passed all.
So you have different levels of background checks, different requirements, yeah.
So the HR department would be the clearinghouse, basically, even if you didn't do the background checks. They would handle it, but then you would, they'd have to send it to you, you check the box for it to go on to the next level.
Yeah, um reviewing all the documentation to make sure that we have the go, that they have a green light to start as a new hire is ideal.
So we're gonna do a workshop this afternoon.
Is that? So we were meeting every other Tuesday, um eight fifteen to nine, but that doesn't give that much time. So is that what you wanna do? Do you wanna do consecutive Tuesdays after meeting and knock it out? Or do you wanna do every other Tuesday, or, or do you wanna just pick another day and do a three hour workshop like we did with Roden Bridge? And in, and focus and get it done, like, I, I'm like, I like to get it done, kind of.
I'm good with any of those options, really, just their plan.
Yeah, cleaning, and I mean, it's been this long, so even if it's next month, or it's like, we come in with a focus of.
We get much later than March, April into there, it's gonna be hard for me to.
Yep.
Okay.
Take big swath, so. Yeah, I mean. So I. I'd probably rather do a morning like we did Friday with Roden Bridge.
Okay.
And if we can find.
Friday morning, or I can't remember, you're in the clinic Wednesday, right?
It varies a little bit right now, it's gonna get better.
And would you like me to um notify those that were on the policy committee that we are now changing process and they will not be. Part of this workshop, or are they still going to be part of this workshop, so that I know who I'm informing of what?
I think that. I would like their opinions and and, you know, cuz they know more about the day to day operations than I do, cuz I'm not there, but. Ultimately. You know, it would be our decision, I guess it would be any. On, on it anytime, but.
And I would.
Whether they wanna be here or not, so.
Yeah, I would let the whole committee know that originally. Signed up, just so they know we're changing. I know we haven't had everybody show up, but.
We didn't have a lot of uh people sign up, so to speak, it was just department heads and then. Um kind of supervisors or managers of some sort, so.
Probably along the way we have questions for, must have been, but so, we know like closed out of it, but.
So did we choose a?
As far as Friday, I'm hoping to March third, it's.
Okay, is March third good for you? I have March third open.
Did you?
Policy work.
You have all, every Friday open till noon?
No, no.
Okay, all right, I wish, I, you said all the way.
I'm gonna get ready to retire, didn't work out.
Policy workshop. March third, Friday.
Nine?
Nine to noon. Uh, actually, we did nine, let's just do nine, because we didn't put an end time, just for the fact the last one, we went twelve seventeen, so. Remember, we had talked about that, so if we just start at nine and we go until we get it done.
Third and the seventeenth, give us two times that and see how far we get.
Oh.
Or at least schedule it so we have that day open, St. Patrick's Day.
Sure, we're agreeing here.
Um, if we do go to the seventeenth, I will have to notify that I will have to shut my door that day.
Oh, then we can choose.
Just, I don't have my assistant that day, she's on the.
It's not, is it a payroll layering?
No, Friday's for payroll, I'm, I'm, I'm okay. So Fridays were no matter. She's just out on the seventeenth, so I would have to shut my door upstairs.
You okay with that?
I'm okay with that, if you guys are.
What was emailed to me? Was one that had written, had my correct story in it, do we have the original manual to collect it out or?
Uh, we do, and we have a Google Doc now as well, so we can.
Okay, maybe it's right here. I'll, I'll do.
Okay, so that will all be taken care of then in our policy workshops. Awesome, so I'm gonna jump back to ten thirty with the Senior Village interim administrator discussion.
I don't know if I'm being presumptuous or.
Sorry, no, well, sorry, no, you were out of the room earlier when we were talking about it. But I said that you had emailed that you'd have the memorandum of understanding available for us to.
Could, could we have a talk real quickly? Uh, Jody, we, we had uh emailed back and forth, and I had some language in there about. When we were paying him and how we were paying him, was that to cumbersome? If we could take that out, I don't think we need, I had language in there about him weekly sending hours worked and then. Us paying him on our next regular payroll date, is that not the best way? What, what's the best way?
So accounts payable is different days than our payroll dates would be, um so. I did speak with Michelle yesterday on timeline of what she would need the hours. Um in order to put in for accounts payable, so he would need to put his hours in the Thursday. Before the Wednesday of that accounts payable, so Fridays are our payroll dates. But our accounts payable will be on Wednesdays. So I just wanted to verify with you that if we were gonna do it twice a month, um that he would have to put in. His hours worked the Thursday before the Wednesday that he would get.
How many, do we do that every week, or is it?
We do, as far as AP, yes, all of those checks right there, those invoices right there were put in. By the department heads by five o'clock Thursday. And then I reviewed them, and then I run the process of running the checks, and then if they're approved today.
So if somebody submits one. Today. When, when will we pay him? So, and if we, they send it in on the tenth, we would pay him then.
The fifty.
Depending upon who they send it to, if it goes to me, I can, I'm typically the last one to have the possibility of having any. Any batches open, because every department head has their own batch, or every department, so to say, cuz not all department heads enter their own bills, but. You know, the assistants do, but they have their own batches per department, so once those batches come to me, they approve them, they come to me. Then I verify, make sure there's images, to make sure they're paid out of the right account, to make sure they're not paid to the wrong vendor, that type of thing, um. And then I approve everything at one time, so my batch is basically, the AP batch is the most. The longest running batch, so to say, um so I can always put something on, on a Friday, if I don't have everything. Cuz I can run into running checks at that point.
If they turn it in tomorrow.
On the eighth?
Yes.
It would be on the fifteen, the fifteen.
So if I just put within ten business days, all in data received of hours worked, that would.
Realistically, um the best way to do it would be like, if we wanna try to keep it, would they, would, would they? Payroll is to just pay it every two weeks instead of twice a month. To pay it every two weeks and to give us the time by that Thursday at, like. Wednesday night cutoff time and get it to us on Thursday, before noon or before.
Fifteen business days.
If it's, if it's given to me on Thursday, would be paid the next Wednesday.
Right, well, I'm just trying to get a, get something in there, simple, so that's what I'm saying, it's ten business days, is that sufficient? Or. I mean, what, we could, we could pay him every week, and I don't think it makes a big difference on our side. And we, we wanna make it simple, so if I give us fifteen business days, that would be. That's gonna be simple enough.
And you could submit his hours every other Thursday to HR and county clerk.
Okay.
Be on a schedule.
So you need to send it to both of you, you can send it to.
Well, he could send it to me and then I would send it on to her to let her know.
Well, we need a short executive session, talk about pay, salary and things like that. I mean, I think I would like to just. Review all of those things before we sign.
Short, meaning how long, sir?
Do you want to print the draft of it, so you can read it before?
Yeah, sure. I think fifteen, I mean, I, I just wanna make sure that I know everything that's in there before. Yeah, I think.
Waiting, does he want us to review before we go in?
Why don't we read it first?
Part of the fifteen then.
Why don't we review it first? Either that or make it for funny.
Let's do that, okay, I moved at the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session. At twelve oh six PM for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be being. Privileged in the attorney client relationship as allowed by KSA seventy five dash forty three nineteen B two, and that the purpose of the whole session is. That confidentiality of the discussion, and that the board come out of executive session in twenty minutes in the commission room basement of the courthouse. Those present will be the three county commissioners, county counselor, county clerk, HR director, and election director. Okay, all those in favor of that? All right, so we are back, um. Have you guys had a chance to review the memorandum of understanding for the interim nursing home administrator?
Yes.
Grab a motion um to allow the chair to sign the memorandum of understanding with David J. Mercier.
Before you vote, just to be clear, I made that one, I made one change about that. So should I print new ones, so you all with it, but.
Well, you just, you've structured it really, I mean, right?
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty simple change, but.
Yeah. I'm aware of that change.
So wait, sign that. Okay, so then move to the second, all those in favor. Sorry, we got it.
I don't think we did move a second.
We're gonna start that one over.
I'm gonna do it, chairman to sign the memorandum.
All those in favors?
All right.
Okay, passes three to zero, I will sign this memorandum of understanding right here.
And you might send the, that via email to my account. Latest rendition. It'd be great.
Just stick this back in the blue folder, is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, that's great.
All right, and then have additions, um. Have a purchase order um to come out of County General. Uh capital outlay for the county attorney um for a column. Call me high back ergonomic office share, a hundred and sixty nine dollars and ninety nine cents. It's gonna move the second in, all those in favors. Passes three to zero. And I have a purchase order coming out of County General for election. Um for the twenty twenty two election for audio layout, media burn, encoding. The total of six thousand seven hundred thirty six dollars and seventy five cents made payable. Uh suggested to election systems and software out of Chicago, Illinois, have a motion to approve.
Oh, my motion.
My movement second, all those in favors, yeah. This is three to zero.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have a whole stack more. Or do you have other things you?
Well, let's just go through them all, one, one motion. Well, we know normally everyone did it, we just.
That's what those are, yeah, there are special assessments were added to certain problems. You're fine, I just wanted to clarify with you.
Thank you.
You guys have anything else, we made it to the bottom of our agenda and.
You know anything else about on our, um, as far as Memorial Hall, what's coming at us with that, the ballpark idea on cost?
So now that you say that, have we heard what the engineers found? We, we authorized that, uh.
Yeah, like three thousand or something like that.
No, it was like twenty-four, I thought the. To do a study.
Yes, the study.
Yeah.
Travis, that's, yeah, I had it.
But I haven't heard back on what they found. So hold on, attached to the letter regarding proposal and so. No, that's good, that's a good thought, though, I, we should follow up on that. Uh, and then also, speaking of Memorial Hall. We had. That we put out to solicit for letters of interest by February third. Um, for the Board of Trustees at the Memorial Hall and we were gonna consider the letters today, so I assume we didn't get any letters. We did not receive any letters, so should we just extend that?
How was that advertised? They should, we put a thing on the globe.
Well, so I asked Wes to put it on or.
It was on our website, I do know.
I'm thinking that I read it maybe in the.
January twenty-four.
In the globe. I saw something somewhere. I'm sure I read it, um, when, you know, without. Everybody doesn't go to the Ash County website, I mean, we'd like to believe that, but what I'm wondering is if.
But I think it was probably shared as well through our Facebook page and potentially the.
Wes did, um, he posted it on the county website and Facebook for my request on January twenty-fourth.
Okay, so we got Facebook too, okay, was there?
Those are also things that I think are good to discuss is like how that, those channels work. Because like a lot of things that we do and discuss, department heads aren't on and don't know.
Right.
And without ha- us having to ask like, hey, can you put this out there? What's the best method? I don't, I don't know the answer.
But no, as far as I know, we did not receive any, that's why we're not on the internet.
We're gonna extend it.
Yeah.
Another one.
Okay, three weeks?
Move the press release out, maybe something like that, maybe just to say, hey, to the radio, to the globe, say, just put it out there.
Yeah, we.
Announce it or put in a little story.
And then we could vote at our first March meeting.
Any other openings, anything else coming up?
That's the only one I just remembered when you had me look at the Memorial Hall, I saw that that was supposed to be today.
Yeah, I found as we paid three thousand, the twenty-four hour thousand was still, I like you on it, that's what I was gonna add, yes, I saw the three.
Yeah.
So you said open those on, do that on March, but then, yeah, that's so extended, okay, yep. We'll make sure that I'm gonna get to the back, well, it's like, cause I think it was already taken down because today would have been the day, so.
Okay, yeah, we'll put. Should we have a, just a boom, 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 media?
You know, the world we live in, everybody, there's so many different ways to get messages out and everybody uses different things, I mean, that part of it.
Yeah.
But you started doing Snapchat and Instagram, I guess, I mean, I don't know where you take it.
Yeah.
Not TikTok, the Chinese will be.
Right, exactly.
The weather was really close, you know.
Uh-huh, actually, that was seen, uh, on the Sabbath ad, I think.
Yeah, I just think, I wanna look at that policy as far as getting a message out, Facebook and. Little radio and. Website, I mean, I don't know what you're gonna do, but.
Yeah, you know, on this one, I don't know, I could re-exensively contact V F W. I mean, I didn't think of it, I was here when we did it before.
To target the.
Yeah.
The ones that we.
That's a good idea, I mean, I just. For our listener, with the people.
Haley had a huge step forward.
Serious paper shop, please.
Was like the. Maybe bill wrong or something, is that why they're all the same?
It's a special assessment, which is so much.
If I'm correct, um, they don't pay, so that little place. For those, I believe, that they don't necessarily pay like the sewer or whatever it is or have to look again. Actually two, so the city just assesses the tax to them.
So when they pay their tax, they're paying.
So it's on, so then they're still having to pay the bill, but some people choose not to pay it.
Gotcha.
So then it just gets assessed, I believe that's what it's.
Yeah, this is sewer, so this is their city.
Yes, yes. I, well, I had, I, as I said that, I was like, I better make sure, that's what my understanding is.
That's the way I understand it too, that there.
There's only like one that actually pays it, so then everyone else gets assessed, so then it goes on.
Then that's just something that city enacted or something, like that's how they.
I, I'm not positive, that's what I know, yes. So that's why there's so many of them and it is for the same thing that's.
Yeah.
Last few years.
It'd be like, I, Pat, maybe correct me if I'm wrong on this, but if someone went through and was. Had a fine from violating the nuisance ordinance and they refused to pay, it could be put on special assessment. And collected.
Does like the weeds and actus?
See, I don't think. Explicitly, we don't have that authority, the statutes give that authority explicitly to cities, but not the counties. On the nuisances, when, whenever there have been fines that have been done, those have been done by district court, the court has the authority to enforce that. And this is what, uh, I, I wasn't tracking, we were talking earlier, Casey was talking earlier. We've kind of, uh, or I've thought of abandoning that model and going towards a civil. Action for district court or compliance because it's just every time. We hear a lot of harping about you're only after the money, you're only after money. As you know, I don't keep any fines that we collect and you, you don't see them either. So, just taking that off the table so that it's clear that all we're after is compliance.
Stables the money, right? You condition me, I seen your hand coming. And they, yours was that big?
I know, right? A lot of them. So for next week, we had mentioned Brian to come give an update. And Stacy will have the flyer. Was there anything else next week that we've already laid out?
Well, Brian, R P's.
The R P's form, I just wanna make sure I give them the information, R P's for mowing. And then update on construction.
Those mowing contractors do, I've seen them do a, like a first work, uh. A square, a square yard, they calculate the area, and they did based on that, it's interesting, so having was to do it, but. But he's, he's probably got the template from last year, could, we've done it for a couple of years. Yes, he hadn't seen it, but it looked like, kind of approached us, just kinda wanted to take it back under his wing, with all of the projects we've got. And, uh, I was kinda against it because he's so important that. And the things that he are, is doing is so important, it's hard to replace him and how many hours out of mower, he's not. Doing the things that he really needs to be doing, yeah.
Joe Bowen handled the last one and it was just pretty much lump sums based on.
Okay.
The locations.
Uh, I think that that was for multiple years, so, I mean. When he first signed that, didn't we do that, have the option for three years?
I, yeah, I know that they had the option for three years, but that was just how the, how they calculated their totals. Was just a lump sum, not based on.
Oh, okay, I thought you just.
Which again. That can change, that will be altered because several of the won't be.
Facilities.
We don't own the corner over here, Senior Village, it's doing their own thing, like their law, that'll be changed from, from then, but. Um, and then. What else? So I was gonna have Wes come, uh, back with a update on. I don't know, I guess he told us only a hundred and sixty people, because that was one of the things Rainbow wanted to talk to him about was. The, the data that they collected, um, so just really website training schedule, how he's worked with the departments.
The gentleman that from Cummings that spoke to us about, has there been, I mean, I, I, I really. Kinda know what he was talking about, having the nodes.
Yeah.
That first, that were placed throughout the county and, and is there any follow-up?
So I followed up twice now with no luck, uh, Bright Speed purchased Century Link. And so when Bright Speed, when he turned me on to their contact info, it was like, when you went to their website, it was like, small. Small business, you could see who you're talking to by their contact website, you know, I emailed them and then within weeks it had merged to the Century Link. So it's like. So now they have a government email, which I've emailed twice with no. No, um, response, so again, that's why I was thinking if we had a dedicated group. I could dig in deeper, go to some of these conferences, network with people, because I get them too, but it's like, you know. There's only enough time in the day to be able to get to everything, but it needs to be a county focus and if we had a focus group that can dedicate. You know, I don't know. Because it seems like the more you read from Naco, from K A C, from Rainbow, everybody, there's. They're pushing it, there's initiatives, so it's like, I just never feel like we're on top of them because. There's so much, we're trying.
To me, it's still a want, I mean, yeah, you know, it's. People, most people have some kind of option and, but is the county. Held to make everybody, make it cheap for everybody, you know, or make it. The unilat, is the same price across the county for everybody? Access, it's just access. Well, again, people say, well, I don't have fiber, it's nothing like with, you know, but if, if they do have dial-up or they have some other form of. Internet, I mean, do we guarantee a speed? Do we guarantee a price? I mean, that's almost what I hear a lot of these people demanding. I, I understand demanding that, but I mean, real, reality is, uh, everybody wants a road to their house, but. Everybody doesn't get a Portland highway, it's. I know, it's, we're like, we don't guarantee rural water at a certain price or, uh, certain, you know, it's, you, you. Pay for the extension, uh, you know, even K P N L, you know, might run a mile from your house, but you're gonna. Add it, you're gonna pay for that line for your house. Right, you know, the thing about a wallet is, um. Generation wise, there's differences in what the needs for internet are and. No one's obviously plot a number say under forty-five, once less internet. And, you know, as these properties transition and people pass away, move out and retire, so. It, it could be a, it could be a hurt to our economy as far as trying to. You're running a farm operation or anything, they need, need internet, you know, so just, uh. I, I think it's something that we just need to keep looking at ways to help the access. What I'm saying, it's gonna take ten years, I mean, or whatever, I mean. It, it's, to me, it seems like there's a different outlook from the public on internet versus rural water or. Uh, electricity or something, they, yeah, they know if they're gonna build a house somewhere, they're gonna have to pay for that, but it's almost like. They think that they're gonna get fiber network. You know, everybody's gonna get it and it's gonna be very affordable and, you know, it, it just seemed like there's a different. Metric for what people expect with, uh, internet versus maybe more, I call vital, you know. Water and, and electricity are more vital to, to your existence than internet. Just an observation. I'm interested in getting for, for people and I think it's great for economic develop, development, don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to talk it down, I'm just saying that this.
You're prioritizing utilities and.
Yeah.
Water.
We're talking Maslow hierarchy of needs. But there's just, but internet's pushing towards a need for people trying to work from home, education needs.
And I, I think that's the hardest part is because I do know constituents that don't have. Good phone or internet, but then also you can't gauge it based on your own when you're driving around the county. Because there's businesses that are operating on a different company that are fine, you know, I went out to like Cummings for. Spending time out there, dead zone, no phone, no internet, period, like I, nobody can get ahold of me. But then some of my small businesses in that area, they're like, oh yeah, we have Century, you know, Century Link or. T-Mobile hotspot and we're fine, and so then it's like, oh, okay, well, maybe, you know, it's perception of, how do we get? Data, how do we get, you know, and that's the.
Those are getting better and better with the satellite and the, um, wireless, they'll, they'll get better over time, so. But if it's a utility, what's the difference between the different utilities? I mean. It's competitive marketplace, but let them. Well, if it's the marketplace, it's the marketplace, I mean, we do everything we can to encourage it or, you know, facilitate it. But. You know, we don't guarantee rural. You know, it's, it's the marketplace and it's gonna cost some, some people more, that's just fact.
And county counselor updates, oh, sorry.
Oh, no, I. It, it very, it, it varies depending on what the utility is, because if it's electricity or natural gas that. The K C C, yeah, Kansas Corporation Commission.
Yeah.
And, and telephone has some authority to order. To order those extensions and some utilities are more necessary than others, as you, you know, but, um. I don't have anything.
Okay, any other need for executive sessions?
I don't have any.
Okay, opioid comment?
Do have something, uh, next week you will have, uh, um, the opioid litigation that was ongoing and. A year or two ago, we entered into a cooperation agreement with the Kansas Attorney General, Kansas Attorney General's Office. We did receive, uh, three checks, I think, uh, Michelle has deposited them in the opioid fund. And we'll have some information, all the specifics about it next week and, uh, discussion about, um. There's a form that the A G U's office wants us to have filled out, they. They did send to us. They just said that they wanted it and so I have it next week.
County Dave. Thursday, we're all set. I find still I don't in there. I probably will not be there at eight. I mean, there's probably way when I get there. So. Not that I'm ongoing myself, because but that I may have to.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, I'm gonna drive by myself and juggle schedules, so.
I think I'm picking Joe up maybe. I know he talked. I think I picked him up and then are you ready? Are you one? Who else is going?
Uh Jody.
Michelle.
Michelle's going to meet with um. They were doing that Mokian.
I don't know if Michelle's going or not. She has some appointments that day, so she's not sure. She's gonna make it.
Oh, yeah, she was gonna be down there anyway.
So yeah, if she can, I think she will, but I don't know if she is or not. But I, yeah, I'm not.
And that's just in the general like lower level, we walk in and it's just all right there.
I I I need to go as well, but County Counselors Association also has a a table, so I. I'm not sure which which one will be at, but. I'll be there as well.
As we gear up for that policy. Meeting, Pat, is there a good way? Cause I was just thinking, I I just found these that. Michelle had asked us to look over uh the procurement policies, um the bid policies. So again, I think all of this needs to be in one. Location, so we know our policies. Um. So I'll just leave that out on the desk. But we're gonna and then maybe as we run into others, we just add to it, but. The employee being one and I T and. E M S and all of the. The policy, so. All right, well, if there's no public comment, do you have a motion to adjourn?
I move. Sorry.
I'm moving second with all those in favor. I I we are adjourned.
If we do not pass something, do we need that back in the paper?